And or Carol could respond to that matter. And they could also respond to the issue on whether Mr. Reagan and Mr. and Mrs. Kowalski had spoken about the possibility of a return of the seed money should they become wildly successful.
Does someone from the group wish to respond to either one of those things?
I could have.
Mr. Reagan?
John.
John Reagan? Did you want Mr. Lamorato to go first?
Mr. Lamorato.
Would you wait just a minute, Mr. Reagan? Yes. Go ahead, Mr. Lamorato.
Mayor and City Council, Carol Anderson and myself have been meeting on a monthly basis with the Troy Nature Society, starting back in July, this past July. We've been meeting monthly. We've worked with them on letting them know things that we would need to have in place in order for this to even come this far and be brought to the City Council. So we needed a business plan. We needed to know they were interested in the seed money, and we said that's a possibility, as long as you have to give us a plan on how you're going to spend it and budget and so forth. And we would have the review to review that, which we have reviewed their budget and concur with that. We also started the initial review of the license agreement, and the City Law Department also is looking at that from the Fenner Nature Center in the City of Lansing, using it as a template and trying to craft our agreement with them for that operation of the nature center. We just met recently, since they've adopted their new board and so forth. We met with them just this past month, in November, and had our first meeting with the new board and laid out, we've been working with them on budget numbers and giving them all the information we could possibly give them to try to come up with a plan. I said, "We need to see a plan that is going to fly, that is a reasonable plan, an operating plan." I think they need to have the seed money to develop some of that, to get some expertise and to help them, and not only helping with the plan, but also to try to raise money. They've had several efforts already that are underway right now to generate some revenue. But as far as paying back, we really haven't, I haven't talked about that, and to pay that back, and I'm not sure where, at this point, if that would be paid back or not.
Okay. Maybe Mr. Reagan would like to speak to that. Reagan? Would you identify yourself, too?
Yes, I'm John Reagan, and President of the Troy Nature Society. The first, or the second question, when we initially met, when we initially met with Mr. Lamorato, I stated the objectives of the society, and that was to become a 501(c)(3) tax-exempt corporation. At that point, he agreed, "Yep, that's what we want," and we went forward from there. It was a goal of ours, not of the city. They agreed that we should do that, though. There was discussion about a business plan. They wanted a very detailed business plan, of which we're working on now. The seed money is part of that business plan because we're not rich yet. We need time to do that.
And was there any discussion about the monies being repaid to the city? Should you be, as Mr. Zerlag said, wildly successful with raising funds?
No, that has not been discussed.
You had to discuss it?
No.
Okay, all right. Thank you, I appreciate your. Does anyone else have a question for him while he's here? Okay, thank you. I think that for the quality-of-life venues, for the nature center, that I appreciate the folks that, and many of these folks are people that have volunteered many hours for many years at the nature center. They are a viable group, dedicated, and, as I look at it, a real group, who is going to do some real, honest work for the nature center. My concern with it being too broad is that we might, we haven't had this happen, but we might have some bogus group that makes up a name, come forward, that takes a name from another group and adds something on, come forward, and they may even pass the standard of a 501(c)(3). I don't know what those standards are with the federal government, but I want to make sure that if we are going to provide seed money for a group to help, such as the Troy, the nature center society, that it be a group that we can count on to do exactly what the funds are going to go for, that they do have a plan, that they've been checked out, et cetera. Because I have seen instances, and there have been instances around the United States, that there are groups that come forward, and they're not groups that have the true values of what they say they are, come forward. And so that was my concern. I was being overly protective, but I've learned over my years that that's what sometimes they need to do. So in asking the questions, I want in no way that it reflects negatively upon the Troy Nature Center Society. I do feel that they are a valid group and that they are deserving of these funds, but I had to bring that forward. Anyone else?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I think you have some good points. It's good, it's good public policy, and those parameters need to be there, and I think that's important going forward. As far as the society, they certainly, a 501(c)(3) takes a long time to get, and that's a lot of work, and you guys should be commended for doing it the way you have. I think we might find it of interest to see your goals and bylaws. I know you have them, I know that you form them, so that might be an interesting attachment. I know that when you visit the Troy Museum site, that there's a link to the Historical Society, and their information is found on there, so it makes it easy for someone to join the society or volunteer and have an understanding of their goals and objectives. So that might be something to consider in the future, as you establish yourself. But this has been ideal, this is wonderful to see. It's true that we will later on talk about the role of today's volunteers, and these volunteers have a mission and are driven and are ready to succeed in support of this important community amenity, and we all appreciate it.
Anyone else on this item? Mrs. Bartholomew, then we have the vote?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrillak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. Congratulations. Maybe Mr. Reagan will send us an email with those, the bylaws, that information. I think that would be helpful, so that if we get inquiries from other citizens, we'll have that. Thank you. Okay, next is the ratification of the contract extension and early retirement incentive program, Troy Fire Staff Officers Association for 2011 to 2014. It is quite a lengthy resolution, but I think should be read so that people understand not only the wording that is in here, but the commitment that goes behind these words, both from the fire service, folks in our wonderful Troy Fire Department, and also from the staff in the council. So who would like to move the resolution and read it? Councilwoman McGinnis?
Madam Mayor, I'll move the resolution. Whereas a tentative agreement has been reached between the City of Troy and Troy Fire Staff Officers Association, TFSOA, for the period July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2014. Whereas Michigan's continuing rising unemployment and reductions in the taxable value of real estate are adversely affecting the City of Troy's operating revenues. Whereas Michigan's continuing economic distress has led city management to project significant budget shortfalls for fiscal years 2011, 2012, and 2013. Whereas economic uncertainty demands that the City of Troy government reduce operational expenses while improving efficiency and effectiveness. Whereas one recognized means of reducing operational expenses while simultaneously creating opportunities for reorganization and restructuring is to provide a voluntary separation incentive for city employees to retire. Whereas approximately five Troy Fire Staff Officer Association employees will meet the eligibility criteria for retirement from city employment as of December 31st, 2010, and three Troy Fire Staff Officer Association employees are within five years of meeting the eligibility criteria for retirement from city employment as of December 31st, 2010. And whereas the proposed early retirement incentive program has been reviewed and is recommended by city management as a mechanism to reduce workforce levels, create position vacancies, and provide city management with the opportunity to reduce costs, reorganize, and restructure operations. Therefore, be it resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes implementation of the following early retirement incentive program to be offered to the TFSOA bargaining unit retirement system members who will be eligible to retire or are within five years of eligibility on or before December 31st, 2010. And be it further resolved that the early retirement incentive program may be offered during a 45-day window of opportunity beginning November 29th, 2010, and ending January 13th, 2011, with said incentive being the option of a lump sum payment of $1,000 for each full year of retirement service as of December 31st, 2010, or the conversion from a DC pension plan to a DB pension plan. And be it further resolved that funding for the early retirement cash incentive program shall be obtained from funds made available in the fire department budget, and funding for the early retirement DC to DB program shall be obtained from the funds contained in the members' DC accounts. And be it further resolved that employees in the defined benefit and defined contribution retirement plans desiring to participate in the early retirement incentive program must file written application to retire no less than 30 days in advance of their requested retirement date, which shall be no later than February 22nd, 2011, with the employee's retirement system on the appropriate form, but in no event shall the application form be filed later than January 21st, 2011. And be it further resolved that the lump sum early retirement incentive pay shall not be included in the final average compensation, FAC, for employments on the defined benefit plan. Contributions will be made to an employee's defined contribution plan by the City of Troy and the employee as a result of this lump sum payment. And be it finally resolved that Troy City Council hereby authorizes city management to negotiate participation in the early retirement incentive program with representative employees, retirement system members, in collective bargaining proceedings. And be it finally resolved that a three-year extension of the 2006-2011 collective bargaining agreement between the City of Troy and TFSOA for the period July 1st, 2011 through June 30th, 2014, as presented, is hereby ratified by the City Council of the City of Troy, and the mayor and city clerk are authorized to execute the final agreement.
Support.
Was that Councilwoman Beltrameen? Moved by Councilwoman McGinnis, seconded by Councilwoman Beltrameen, that we approve the resolution as printed and read. In addition to the comments that I made before the item was read, I'd like to say something about the members, not only of our fire department, but of our other employee groups, who have voluntarily stepped forward many times for many years to come forward with agreements that have benefited our community and in some times have meant decreases to themselves as far as amounts that they could have received in salary or benefits because they were doing things for the greater good of the city. Many of the things that we have executed in the city, for example, going from defined benefit to defined contribution, Troy was the leader in doing that before other cities did. And the reason that occurred is because we had a staff that was willing to do that. And so I take this opportunity to commend not only the fire department, but all of the staff, and show appreciation on behalf of the citizenry for that. Thank you. Anyone else? The vote then, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howrillak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. Next is, I, six has been removed by the attorney, and will come forward next week. Mrs. Blum, did you wish to say something about that?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just briefly, that we did remove this. We will be bringing it forward the next time there is a-
The next meeting.
Right, at the next meeting, which I believe is December 6th, and so we will be bringing it forward at that point in time.
Okay, thank you. Next, I-7 is the declaratory action, Kempin Initiative Library Ordinance Petition. We have a resolution before us, before discussion.
Mayor.
Councilman Slater?
I'll move the resolution as printed.
Support.
Moved by Councilman Slater and seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we move the resolution as printed, which is resolved that Troy City Council hereby directs the city attorney to file a declaratory action with the Oakland County Circuit Court to obtain clarity as to the Kempin Initiative Library Ordinance Petition. Discussion of the motion?
Mayor.
Councilman Howrillak?
Yes, I just wanted to bring to council's attention, and I don't think it'll surprise anybody, but I did circulate one petition, and, actually, it was about two or three signatures on two of them, I should say, including my own, by the way. And just wanted to bring that to council's attention and see if they felt that there was any reason for me not to vote on this issue, or if there was any sort of conflict. But I just wanted to make council aware of that and bring that to the table here for potential discussion.
I think the only time that we have asked a council member not to vote on an item was if they had a financial gain from something that was on the table that we had voted on. Is that, is that correct, Mrs. Blum?
Mayor, I would just indicate, I did have a chance to talk with Councilman Howrillak today, and I had told him that same thing, that this is an issue that, again, certainly disclosure is always appreciated, so the council is fully aware. However, our charter says that there has to be a direct financial benefit or detriment that would automatically disqualify a person from voting, a council member from voting.
Thank you. And I don't think that having circulated a petition falls in that category.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilman Howrillak?
In that case, I just want to bring to the table my belief that, two things. One is, is I would prefer that if we are going to take this action, that we do so after the petitions are certified and brought to council. And two, that if we can, before taking action favorably with respect to this resolution, I would prefer to see a little more of the reference case law that pertains to this and how it relates to other things that have happened in Michigan over the last couple of years as well with respect to ballot proposals, but that's just my opinion.
Anyone else on this item? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Fleming?
Yes.
Howrillak?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. On the consent agenda, council members, do you have any items that you want removed? If not, can we have a resolution for approval of all the consent agenda items?
Madam Mayor.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Resolved that Troy City Council hereby approves all items on the consent agenda as presented, including the correction on the table, which, that's it?
Yes. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Mayor Potem Kerwin, that we approve?
McGinnis.
I'm sorry, McGinnis. We approve all of the consent agenda items with this vote. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilmember Howrillak?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGinnis?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilmember Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Motion passes. Council comments at this time?
Madam Mayor.
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I know that there is in here, is it G4? Oh, G1, pardon me. There was a response, reply to public comment. There's a lot of time that was spent on this response regarding whether there are parking signs on Big Beaver, and I kind of thought it was overkill, frankly. I, you know, there haven't been any added, to me, would be, would be plenty, I don't need to see pictures from years back. I just think that's, that's a misused time. What I would have liked to have seen more time spent, and I may not have been clear at this table, was on the memo regarding salaries. And when I, at just this last meeting, our previous meeting, we talked about a memo, and the memo is more than just a chart and three paragraphs in explanation. I was truly interested in having a narrative about how days are put aside, or I made reference to other government accounting practices. And I was disappointed in simply seeing a chart and a few paragraphs. I would have preferred to see more narrative than went with that. I think that's helpful for residents to understand and for council members to understand who haven't been in government employment or overseen government before. So I would still like to see that, a greater detailed memo.
Mr. Zerlag, did you want to respond? I saw you scooty up there. I couldn't tell.
No. The memo does have a chart with footnotes indicating essentially salary, wages, I think my computer's off, but it indicated fringe benefit costs and that are fixed essentially, and other costs that are a liability, if not necessarily a real cost. The examples were vacation and sick leave. If someone takes their vacation time, they don't get paid for it, but it was shown as a liability. I'm not sure what other explanation I could, I could give in that, in that respect.
I think I, Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
I think I talked about exploring it throughout and seeing if there was, were like comparisons throughout the counties, or you're looking at the minutes?
I'm looking at the chart, I'm sorry.
Okay, okay. And some further explanation than that was given there, and I guess you could review the tape and figure out some of those things that were asked. My concern is that sometimes sitting council members mention these things, and my assumption, when I sat before on a board and had a suggestion, that it really was followed through. And I'm just trying to understand whether it's the process here, after three years, that we should do it by resolution, because the idea that we reach consensus or give direction without a resolution may not be precise enough. But in terms of this memorandum on salaries, the specifics that I requested in the last meeting could be found in the tape, but they were broader than just to give us a chart. It really was, what does this mean in terms of other governmental entities, in terms of governmental accounting practices? All of those things. Is it common practice to have cars? What kinds of things have cars? Perhaps you're waiting for the ICMA report, but Manager Zerlag, for those of us on the receiving end of emails and inquiries from the public, a full memorandum and explanation is a helpful guide, and that's what I was hoping to see.
I appreciate that, and there is a direction I would like from the governing body in this respect, and that is that ICMA is looking at just those elements of salary and wages and fringes. I don't want to give the impression of usurping their study, which is going to come out in about six or, six or eight weeks. You know, if the council wants me to do that, I'll instruct Peggy Sears to make it happen. Otherwise, if you want to wait, I think those questions will be answered by an independent third party. But again, I serve at your pleasure, I will do what, how you want, however the governing body wants me to handle this, I'll be happy to, but please know ICMA is going to be doing pretty much the same thing.
Thank you. Councilwoman Beltrameen?
To that end, if ICMA does not answer the questions regarding our employees, all of them putting into Social Security, and how long sick time and vacation time can be accrued, what the limitations are, I would like to see those illustrations. Okay?
Are we talking, and just, may I speak?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Are we talking primarily for exempt and classified personnel or for all employee groups?
All employee groups. I was reading something the other day, and that's where the question comes from, that there is a Michigan city that has major employee groups that do not contribute to Social Security and therefore are not eligible for Social Security after their employment. So if we have similar groups, it would be helpful to know. And, and quite honestly, as long as I've sat at this table, it never occurred to me to ask that question.
All of our groups participate in Social Security, just, just so you know that.
We do, too.
Okay.
All of our groups.
But, but again, I mean, I can have a report for, you know, in December, if you look on these matters, we'll go back and look at the tape.
Yeah, I guess a supplement, for those, Madam Mayor?
Mayor Potem Kerwin?
For those who didn't serve during the hay, I think that these four were here for the hay report, and were, but this side was never there. That might be a helpful supplement.
Okay.
Where you were part of the hay. But I think that that kind of grounding and that kind of information, I think, is helpful. So again, you can review what was asked for before and see if that's going to be addressed or addressed in time. I still have the bottom line question, is it better to do things by resolution or direction at the table is enough to have stuff followed up on?
Let me give a candid response. I think that, that nowadays, a resolution would probably be in order.
Okay.
There may be misinterpretation or different perceptions on what is asked, and that would help me, help my, help delegate certain tasks to my staff, or else it would help me do the task myself. That would be appreciated.
Okay. All right, that's good. Any other comments?
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Councilwoman McGinnis?
I just wanted to point out, I received a press release today that was sent out from our public information officer. The rankings came out from CQ Press, they released their crime, city crime rankings for 2010 and 2011, and the results are in for the City of Troy. It was also on the news tonight, for anyone that may have caught it while they were getting ready to come to the city council meeting, as I did. But Troy has the lowest crime rate ranking in Michigan for cities with a population between 75,000 and 99,999. And this is something that should be noted and congratulated, and while this isn't the first time we've found ourselves on this list, wonderfully so, it doesn't, I don't think it should lessen the appreciation and, and the gratitude that we give the police department for continuing to put our city on this list. Obviously, we've talked about it at the table, we've talked about it a lot at city council. Being a safe city is something that's very important to our residents, and we hope that that continues, and we really congratulate your efforts to making this happen yet again another year, so thank you.
Do we still have our signs that say safest city in Michigan?
I don't know, but we can look for them.
I know, we still have the signs up when we were a sports city, you know, and I saw those.
They can replace our banners that are pretty well dated now.
You know, we could add that to the signs that we're going to have up for distracted driving, and we could have, you can continue to help us be the safest city, having sensible driving habits. Anyway, thank you for bringing that to all of our attention. I know we received the copy of the press release at the, at the break, and it's always wonderful to have good news and to know all of the hard work and dedication and the work that goes on between the police department and the citizenry and the groups that, you know, the police are always the first to say, you know, they don't do it alone, and, but I think that they, the credit is well deserved all around. Any other items? Okay, we have, oh, okay, Mayor Potem Kerwin?
We have three meetings scheduled for December, including one on December 20th. I know we have it on their calendars, of course, I'm available for, but I'm wondering if- if my colleagues might consider if there isn't any pressing business that we might consider canceling the 20th.
Because we're going to have extra meetings in January with the ICMA report, and then the special meeting that we've added on, and that is Christmas week. Some people may have travel plans or other plans, so.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Council, Councilman Bellamy?
I, again, three months in a row with three meetings, four months in a row. I'm not sure that's necessary, but I am concerned from management standpoint, to go from the 13th of December to the 10th of January, that's a full four weeks without a meeting. Is there anything likely to slip through the cracks or be necessary? Because that's not a good time to try and call a special meeting.
Let me ask, if I may, Mark Miller, one question?
Yes.
Our form-based code, does that fall in that area?
No, it will not for approval, but--
No issues.
Okay. Well, then--
Come forward on an agenda in the future.
Oh, on the next agenda, the cancellation of the meeting of the 20th? Could we have that as, as an agenda item then for the--
On December 6th?
Yes.
Absolutely.
Okay, thank you. We do have a study item for council in the other room, so we'll have a recess and reconvene in the other room. To get our Thanksgiving eating going ahead of time, I know it was to work on mission, vision, goals, and several council members had indicated at one of our other meetings that they had each been working on ideas. And so I thought probably the best way to facilitate this is to have everybody give their ideas verbally and include them. I don't know, I'm going to have a light down there to see those, to write them down, and then we can work on putting some of them together. Some people may have similar ideas, and we might want to work on the wording of some, so. Who wants to go first? Anybody?
Madam Mayor, why don't we start on, on vision, and just shout out some, some vision, just start on that. Vision's just where we'd like to go as a city. Where we'd like to be, looking out in the future.
Okay.
Mission, we know we have, the mission is comfortable in the budget process, we know we deliver services as a city, but vision, what do we want to look like? Where do we want to be? And just list ideas for vision.
Okay.
Yes.
Well, we're not used to all shouting out, so I think that breaks the mold. You want individual words or sentences?
I mean, it's not, people I know have worked on it.
Did I hear it all right from you, Councilwoman Bellamy?
I was just getting my notes.
Oh, oh.
Because I, I mean, and quite, quite honestly, my, my future is a balanced, well-rounded, sustainable community.
I had something similar, I put down, to provide for fiscal stability for our sustainable community. So the same ideas, but in just a different fashion.
Fiscal stability?
To provide for fiscal stability for our sustainable community. That's long-term vision. I also had something else, but I'd like some people to--
For a what kind of community?
Sustainable community.
I have to honor the legacy of the past and build a strong, vibrant future. And build a strong, vibrant future.
Strong, vibrant.
Jane?
Oh, Mayor, one of the themes that I think I've heard from a lot of people tonight and in the past few weeks is maybe unified in purpose would be a nice vision for Troy. And I would also, my vision is that everyone will recognize us for our excellence in services to the community.
Recognize?
Excellence in services.
That would be a vision of mine, that everybody would recognize what excellent services we have for the community. Because I'm not quite sure that everybody believes that.
Madam Mayor?
Yes. Councilwoman McGinnis?
I think it would be important to recognize after all of the work that we put in and will continue to put in, that we would be at a level where we consider ourselves to be streamlined and running efficiently, as efficiently as possible. That would be more the fiscal end of it. But I think it's also important that we foster a sense of community through different partnerships, and I think that there are a number of them that we should identify. And it might be too specific for our broad vision, but I think in general, to support that sense of community, we have to partner with businesses, with the city itself, with the departments within the city, with surrounding communities and the county, with our school district, which is going through their own financial struggles, and sometimes, you know, we're feeling like we're in this alone, but we're really, you know, dealing with it as a, as a school district as well, and then obviously within our neighborhoods and within our community groups. So, you don't have to write all that down.
I've got--
Who's got partners? What's that, foster? Read that again, that one.
Foster sense of community.
And partner.
And partnerships.
Through partnerships.
And we probably have, when we get to goals, where we have lots of these, I think a lot of those fit into the goals categories, they'll be very good. And I think those are specific goals that we really have hit on that we need to address.
Councilwoman Bellamy?
Just two words. Customer-focused. I think we're filling in the blanks there, customer, and the taxpayers, and the businesses, everybody, every service that we provide.
Is that a vision or is that a goal?
I see it as, as a vision. A vision, we think, customer-focused. It could be a goal, too.
I have that kind of--
Anybody else? Councilwoman Hana, did you?
Sure. Mine is many people. I had it in my head now. Many people, many backgrounds, a diverse history, and, or diverse background, and our community.
That's good, too.
Diverse and--
Diverse history and our community. Well, it's dot, 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 our community.
Do we want to--
Do you have another one?
Well, it's really more of a goal, I think, rather than, than a vision here, but I had to clearly demonstrate our commitment to provide services for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. I'm sure that every community, even when I looked at the one from Grand leaving, but I think that's more a goal rather than the vision. Are there probably some up there that we want to combine together or? Or? We want to read all of them and then see which ones we want to combine?
Maybe we could dot rank them. Dot rank them or...
Somebody want to read all of them out loud again so that we could...
Do you want me to?
You want to? Okay, thank you.
Balanced, well-rounded, sustainable community. Provide fiscal stability for a sustainable community. Most can't see. Honor past and build a strong, vibrant future. Unified in purpose. Recognize excellence in services. Recognize work towards streamline. Foster sense of community partnerships. Customer focus. Many people, many backgrounds, diverse history, our community. Demonstrate commitment to public safety.
Were there any, Mrs. Bartholomew, that...
I hope everyone would recognize excellence in services for community with unified in purpose as two for one.
Okay.
Mine were a little bit expanded, but very similar.
Okay, all right. You see some that you want to join together? I don't know how long we want our vision to be.
Something we can remember.
Right.
Yeah.
Something we can aim for.
Shouldn't be too lengthy, but...
Couple sentences.
But there's a lot of good ideas up there. I appreciate everybody bringing forward there.
First two tie together really well. Sustainable fiscal stability.
I was just thinking about how we could link some of those together so that we might come up. You know, I, I think that... I almost like starting, you know, when Martin said, many people, many backgrounds, diverse. I think, and did you word it a little bit differently? How did it go again? Many?
Many people, many backgrounds, diverse history, our community.
Yeah.
Would be a place to start and then add in some of those things about fiscal sustainability and fiscal responsibility, fiscal stability and sustainable community. Add some of those things in together. The one that says honor the past and builds strong...
Vibrant.
I can't see it too well. Vibrant future. Ties in there well also.
Honor the legacy of the past.
Right. The legacy of the past.
Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Bethany?
I think our vision statement needs to show where we want to be. And I think it needs to have some definition just from reading it. And so lots of these things are good ideas. But I, I do believe that Mary's thought of, you know, giving credibility to the legacy that has been built and going forward to a vibrant future is probably the best word when she said, honor the legacy of the past and build a strong, vibrant future. That tells people that we don't want to throw out the community that we've built and we want to sustain ourselves and be ever more life-ful in the future. I, I don't know that you would want any other vision for any community.
What about, and... What about combining Mary's honor the legacy of our past and building a strong, vibrant future for the many people of Troy? The many people, many backgrounds, and diverse community of Troy? Or something to that extent, I don't know.
I think, and we all went ah when Martin mentioned it. The question is, is that, isn't that what we have?
Right.
So is it, is it a vision of where we're going? Or is that, aren't we, aren't we many people, many backgrounds, diverse history? And that is our community? So that, that certainly feels right. And that may be what we have. That may be a value that we want to bring in on the right-hand side when we start looking at goals to make sure that we are building that sense of community. And I think that probably that's going to come through on our goal side. Looks like you guys have a lot of goals.
The goal of how we, how we keep that.
Let's just start throwing some goals up and then see what can come back and forth. Do, do people have community goals? Something about working with community partners and so on? Should we start brainstorming those?
Want to do, you want to do goals on the other side in a different color, maybe? I don't know.
Well, it might help us see where we're headed.
Right.
It's kind of backwards to do it that way, but it might help us see where we're headed.
See if...
Because some of those, I think what you're all saying is that some of those might fit there depending on how the wording goes. And I think that's, that's how...
So for any that you, that you have that deal with community, let's just shout out some community ones. I know that you have a bunch, but you can't. I, I do have work with community partners, begin community conversations.
Community conversations? Is that a separate one?
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And then kind of a longer one. I'll, I'll hold off on that. So any, if you look on your sheet, your community things.
Well, I've got welfare of our community, but it's a longer one. Provide for the welfare of our community. I'll shorten the other part that I have.
There's some that are going to be financial ones, I think, that come up.
Right.
Well...
Councilwoman Sawyer?
Well, my first goal is a safe, clean, and livable city. And then my second goal is a fiscally sound, effective city government.
Fiscally sound.
Effective.
Effective.
City government. I had sustainable growth. My fourth was a responsive, committed, and innovative workforce.
Innovative. Innovative. Innovative.
I think about one of the ones, actually, it was right on Grand Hill. It says establish sustainable financing. Financing?
I have something similar on financing. I still, I have, use long-term planning to ensure sustainability. Something we're doing, but I think it is an ongoing goal.
Right.
Ensure long-term...
Use long-term planning to ensure sustainability.
Lauren? Well, in preparing for the meeting, I was obviously looking through and trying to get some ideas from other cities across the country that have gone through a similar process. And something that I, I found that seemed to be most workable was, would be those cities that in preparing these types of objectives, also looked at how they were going to measure them, the strategies to achieve them, and then how they would be measured, which I think is something that we've seen when we've done different studies within our own city departments. By having that in place, I think it gives you more of a sense of accomplishment after you've established some of your objectives. But I think some of the most important things are some of those that are already mentioned. I had also to engage the public and to encourage public participation. Something that I don't know if I heard specifically would be to maintain good, good stewardship of our infrastructure. And I don't know if that's something that ultimately would be rolled into something else and then attracting, maintaining, uh, new business, or attracting, maintaining business. And I think that those are all things that we can come up with strategies to measure. So those are, that's kind of my benchmark for picking things I would like to see as our goal subjects, and so we can actually implement a strategy or point to a strategy that we're already using to do those things, and then how we would measure those things, you know, whatever timeframe that is, so.
So are you saying that you want me to write someone here about metrics? Or no?
Well, again, that's just kind of my two cents. I don't know if you want to confuse the...
It's up to you.
The listening, but...
I'm writing your goals.
For the accountability piece, normally the goals would then go to management and then they would come up with the strategies to say, that's how it would follow. And then the, the time's certain. So the initiatives would come from, and we check back and see. Right now, we have more goals.
Okay. Waiter, Martin?
Something about regionalization. I think that we're going to have to continue to look outside the boundaries of Troy if we're going to be sustainable and help the other communities be sustainable. I'm not a good wordsmith, but my thought is we really need to have a goal of, of trying to work with other communities, regionalization, to combine services, reduce costs. We say it here, but we don't, we're sort of in the context of our boundaries now. I think we have to look beyond our borders to be sustainable and, you know, have other communities' rights. We're already doing some of that, but I think we have to do more.
I had develop and maintain efficiencies with internal and external partners.
That's, that's, that's a good one.
Efficiencies?
Right.
With internal, external partners.
Develop, maintain...
Efficiencies.
...with...
Internal, external. Here, thank you there. Other communities.
Well, it encompasses the public engagement piece, which you all know is bigger than...
You say partners again?
Yes. In the regionalization, you spoke of, you would hope that if you're efficient, you're also effective. I, and I think that it's, it's easy to wrap our arms around objectives and strategies and harder to set goals. And when you look at this list, some of them really are more tactical than goal.
Right.
That's very true.
But that's what we can wrap our arms around, so.
It was a good conversation to begin. I have some on business and I think that we're kind of getting there. But certainly, perhaps we're doing this, but we, we recognize the need to do more. And one is to position Troy as the place for, for business. This came up when we had our joint meeting with the Planning Commission. And it was suggested at that meeting that there'd be a plan developed regarding this. If we, if we become, through our ordinances, the place to do business, how will people know? And to that end, I put as a separate one, Mark, develop a plan, may involve marketing, so that people will know. It's not enough to say, well, here we are, check our website, we are the place.
Do you want to say develop a marketing plan?
No, I do not.
No? Develop a plan and then may involve marketing.
Position Troy as the place for business, develop a plan, may involve marketing. The third one, again on business, is create inclusive entrepreneurial culture. The more we learn about why entrepreneurs, entrepreneurs come to communities, it's because they see an inclusive, diverse culture. And we need to make sure that we have that if we're going to attract the entrepreneurs. In fact, we just had that.
We just saw that at P3, P3 North America. Yeah, in fact, they verbalized that. And they had several of their business partners speak on why they came to choose to work with P3 International, North America, from the German company. So that was quite interesting.
Something with this, but actually beyond that. It came out at tonight's meeting and it's a big goal, I think. And it's bring back the pride. Bring back the pride. I mean, I don't think any of us, I can't speak to you, but we felt better. We've had better days. We got to bring back the pride so that when people, there was a time when people heard Troy and thought, man, they know how to do it. Got to get that pride back. We have to feel it. Staff needs to feel it. Community needs to feel it. That's a plan in itself that involves some of those above. But I, I think that that's an important piece I would like us to focus on. And then in...
Want somebody else to?
Yeah.
Okay. Who else had, had ones? Martin, you were writing, are you writing new ones or...
No, I've got, I've got a couple I can throw out there. I've got embrace and encourage community involvement.
Well, that's a good one.
I could go at the top, Mark, because that's a bunch of community ones up there.
Poor Mark.
Don't lose it in the business.
Remember you volunteered for that job. It sounds good. It sounds good. Anyone else, Martin?
Some of those are similar, but I'm just brainstorming anyway. Maximize cost containment while maintaining quality of services.
While maintaining...
While keeping service.
Quality services.
Quality of services. And similar to one we used to have, maintain and improve public infrastructure.
Similar to... Similar to Councilman Slater's.
I can't read any of that. We need a bigger whiteboard. Oh, what happens if we write on the wall?
Steve Blatt will be very upset.
We'll have to paint it after the next council meeting.
We'll be coming over to paint, right?
Well, that, that brings us to one then. Involve volunteers in new ways. I would actually put in new vital ways. That won't be painting, though. Involve volunteers in new vital ways. And that, this, tonight was a perfect example.
Vital ways.
Vital ways. We've had great volunteers for many years, and now's the time. Right, I visited the, just sharing, I visited the library right before this. Two different volunteers came up. They're there at night. Lori, I know you saw, because we were there together. Two different volunteers, community volunteers, came up, may I help you with anything? Do you need to find a book? Is there anything? Very, very nice. And it's so important right now. And it was a great touch from community volunteers. Hadn't had that happen like that before in the libraries.
Any more? You've got some. Robin?
Well, as we, as we talk about engaging our citizens, and I know as well as anyone that it is the business community that gives us the money for our luxury list. Absolutely. But I also believe that we want to attract a, a complete range of residents.
Dean, did you have more on yours that you wanted to know?
I gave four.
Okay. I was just trying to give everybody a turn.
It's going to be a menu. I mean, throw some up, yeah, it's going to be a menu. So we'll, we'll choose some from column A and column B. So put some up there.
I did.
Okay.
I was just asking, didn't mean he had to do anymore. Anybody else have any more?
I still have more.
Wade, do you have more? You want some of this good stuff? See, this gets us talking here.
I have some just for us. And this would be different than city goals, but it's council goals and some things that we know. Seek to create an environment of trust and respect among council members.
Seek to create.
And these, these will be council goals different from city goals.
An atmosphere?
Are we working on those?
An environment?
I didn't think we were working on those.
I wrote city council goal.
Need to create an environment.
Of trust and respect among council members.
Trust and respect.
Between?
Among.
Among.
Maybe put staff in that too?
I have one on that. I have a different one, Wade. But yeah, these are, I put, develop strategies to strengthen trust, communication, and to maximize the performance of the leadership team. And that would be top staff as well. Just develop strategies is good, to strengthen trust. And that would include the leadership team. That would be an ongoing thing. And again, that's work for us as a team. And the third one I have for us to consider, well, actually I have one. But is to seek information and ways that council and community can be better informed about the city's progress through an objective analysis of data.
All right, seek information in ways.
Well, Tony can get it. It's seek information in ways council and community can be better informed about the city's progress through an objective analysis of data. But all three of them have that common component, and it's that we recognize that we need to build trust within and without. And I think that's just paramount.
I know we've already done it by doing a three-year budget, but I think that in our goals, we should have something in our goals about the fact that the long-range budget planning continue to foster, or continue to expect long-range budget planning. I think it's important to have it there. A lot of the things that we're putting down are things that we've, we're doing, but we want to make sure that we have them down as goals, too.
Edamere?
Yes.
Lori? You don't have to write this down, but I had in my notes almost the same thing, that we want to seek to create a community of informed citizens. And I think part of that would be our responsibility to provide the tools to get them the information. I'm not saying that we don't do that, but I, I think that there's always room for improvement. And then another component that I'm not sure if we really touched on yet would be more in line with community planning. I think we should focus on planning and development that will bring us towards that walkable, livable community that we've talked about. And, and that may be slightly different than some of the goals that they, they've talked about, the community's talked about in the futures report, in Vision 2020. But I still think that that's something that community members value. And I definitely think in terms of planning, that's the direction that we're going towards. So, and that's the direction that we're hearing is, is a decided course of action. So I think we need to continue to focus on that.
Trying to think if there were some of those the wording, we've, when we had, we had, we shortened it down to just three things. And, and maybe that was an error in making it too compact. Remember when we shortened everything down? I, I like the fact that we're verbalizing things much broader and much more information. My, my problem is, I like the fact that you said about communicating more, you get informed public and everything, but my, and I hate to throw a white blanket, but I get real concerned when I hear people in the community say, like, for example, there's so much information in the Troy today that comes out. You know, not that everybody needs to read every page, but there is certain good information that's in there, sometimes brand-new information. You know, people say, I get that, and I just throw it in the recycle bin. I don't even read it. And then we say, well, we had, and I don't want to say his name, but there's somebody who comes to speak at the mic and says, he doesn't have a computer, so he doesn't read any of the agenda items. You know, we're assuming people are reading all this stuff. So maybe we need to figure out some way to encourage people to be more connected in with the information. I don't know how we can, how we can do that, because I think we've got a lot of things going on that are going out to people, but I don't know if everybody's connecting into it. Maybe I'm expecting too much, or maybe too close to it. But people are busy with their own lives, their own things they're doing with their kids and stuff, and, and so maybe they're... Do you get that too, Martin? Do you, do you hear that from people?
Well, I was going to say, if you really, if you have a piece of information you really want somebody to see, stick it in with the water bill or the tax bill. You know, when there, there's a bill involved, you know, they'll, they'll look at whatever's in there. And I say that somewhat tongue-in-cheek also, but there's a point to it. But I want to go back to one of our old goals, which was to, and, and this is going back before, we went from, I think, five to three.
Right.
Effectively and professionally communicate internally and externally, because I think that addresses some of your concerns with the, with the word effectively and professionally. And I'd like to put that up on the list, yeah.
I thought that was a good one. That always was a good one.
It seems that it takes multiple strategies.
Right.
Exactly.
So, and I think that, that now when there's so much information, there is an art, and there is a, and it, it's certainly merit.
Any others?
Sure.
Go ahead. We like that.
Let's see here. Sorry.
These are council goals?
No, we're just city goals.
Goals, and then we'll, then we'll, we'll sort them out to whether they're going to be some city goals or?
Conduct city business and engage in public policy formation in a consistent, well, I don't know about consistent, but in a clear and transparent manner.
Conduct city business and in a?
Engage in public policy formation. Drop that in there. In a clear and transparent manner.
Clear and transparent.
He got rid of consistent.
Yeah.
For the purposes of changing bias.
I didn't thi, yeah, I didn't think that would. When I, sometimes when you read it, you realize that, you know, changes need to be made.
I have an idea. I don't know if it'll fly or not, but we have quite a bit that we've already written down. And I'm wondering if council wants to start putting some of these together now, or do we want to take all of this in writing and get it sent to us? Oh, I see people say, okay, get it sent to us like this. And then each one of us could look at things that we could combine, so that when we come back to work on it again, we'll already have some of those ideas of how it goes together. What do you think about that? Robin?
But the, I, I think that's fine, Mary, except in addition to combining, I would, I would also like the ability to see some that I would want pushed to a strategy or a tactic as opposed to a goal. And, and some of those will be worth keeping, and some may not.
That's right. Some may not be this time.
Right, right, yes. I think that, because editing. I don't know, because you've done a lot of editing. Is important, right. But I think it's been valuable for all of us to share and enunciate the things that we felt we should bring forward.
Edamere?
Yes.
It would be helpful if like items were kind of grouped, if they had some common thing. And it would be helpful if it ultimately came to us in a Word document rather than a PDF, so that we could play, you know, have a real copy that you send, and then one that we kind of play with. See what we can come back and use Doc voting, or talk about, or rank, or whatever we want.
Okay.
That would be a part two.
Okay. Now, in addition to us doing ours, we have staff to do some things, too. So we're going to have staff, they brainstorm some goals and stuff, too, so. But, but we're going to do our own. I mean, because usually we do the vision and the goals, and they do the.
Objectives.
Objectives and tactics.
Objectives, and how to carry it forward. And then when you see it all, you see how some of those things that we put down actually fit into the objectives category. Is that all right with everybody? Okay. All right.
Can I just say?
Yes. Sure.
I mean, there's a lot of, a lot of goals up there about partnerships and communities and all that other stuff. And there was one mention of the employees. And I really think that, I mean, I, I come from here, so I don't want to look like I'm patting anybody's back, but I think there needs to be something up there about supporting our employees. I think that they're responsible for carrying out what we want. So.
Right.
I think we should have supportive of our employees up there somewhere.
Well, there's a spot right there, Mark. You want to add that one in? See that little spot that we took something out? I think that's a good, good call.
So how, you want it to sound supportive of the employees? I can do it here or here? There's more room here.
I, I probably attract and retain exemplary employees.
Just something up here about the employees.
I think he wants to use the word support.
Yeah, I, I, I want to use the word support.
A responsive, committed, innovative workforce up there, of course, that.
Support.
We wouldn't have that unless we were supportive of them.
Support.
Demonstrate support?
Yeah.
Say demonstrate support.
Employees.
Employee efforts.
You know, public safety, got an accolade late tonight for what they do. City administration gets, I think, you need to continue to support.
Yeah.
I think put in the letters, too, in the package. I don't know how many people read them, of all the recommendations or thank yous and so forth.
Is that good, Dean? Demonstrate support to this city employee.
Yeah, and why come back if somebody wants to?
Like recognize exemplary work. Do you want recognize exemplary work?
I.
I'll tell you what, why I'm, support. Well, you, I mean, we could recognize that some, some folks are going to lose their jobs, and then they're going to say, but you said you demonstrate your support. So I, I just don't know, are we recognizing exemplary work? Are we attracting? So that's why the support part is the part that I don't, I don't understand.